Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I will call this regular city council meeting of July 23rd to order. The first item on our agenda is the open forum. And we do have two individuals here for the open forum. So I will ask you to please come up. If you can write your name and address on the paper there. And then you have three minutes and no more than three minutes to share your comments. And this is not a discussion period. It's just for you to come in and share your comments. So first up, we have Jeannie Streits. Thank you for coming. Whatever, just speak into the mic and whatever is most comfortable. And then you want to make sure the mic is on. Is the green light?
There's a green light.
Perfect. There we go.
Shall I? There. That good? That sounds kind of loud. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jeannie Streits. I live at 6701 Seventeenth Avenue. And I'm here today. And I'm asking the city to consider. I think you're familiar with what I've been going through the last couple of years with my house and the Chamberlain community that's encroached upon my property. And so I'm here to ask, as the last resort of the Uniform Relocation Act, to build a home. Because I've been in, looking in the market for a long time. And I have found that there's... It's just, it's a seller's market. There's been a lot of people that are just making a lot of money on homes. And they've been flipped a lot of times. And I don't feel comfortable in this. I've looked. So I was riding around Veterans Park. And on 65011th Avenue, which is... There's a whole block down on the... It would be the southeast entrance of Veterans Park. There's homes on the other side. There's, you go probably like six houses down. There's the bike path. And then there's a vacant lot. And I had looked at a home in eighty-seven when I purchased this home over there. And the lady still lives there. And a gentleman that lives there since eighty-five said, "It's all covered with trees. You can't see the park. It doesn't, it wouldn't obstruct anybody's view. It's not used for anything except their national night out." And so moving on. I just think that that's going to be the most cost-effective way for me to get out of my house. This last year of living through this construction has been really hard on me. And I would like some clarification and some resolution. Tell me my three minutes are up.
You've got one minute, but you don't need to use all of it.
Can I give it to Bob?
Yeah, I can call up the next person. Thank you so much, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person we have for the open forum is Bob Hall. Yes, if you want to just sign your name and address. Thank you very much.
You might have to bear with me a little bit because my eyesight is dwindling. Good evening, council members. I am here this evening to support Jeannie Streits in her effort to acquire a new home and return to a normal life after having her current home badly damaged and her environment has been radically changed by the construction of the huge apartment complex adjacent to her home. You have listened to her describe her plight and asked for your support of the solution she has proposed. I believe people are elected and hired to serve the citizens of the city, not developers. And that is why I'm here. The people I'm talking about are the council and the staff. Some of you may be aware that I have lived here for more than fifty-three years. I served on the planning commission and several commission, citizen commissions over the years. I edited and produced the... And arranged by Citywide Distribution of the 2010 Welcome to Richfield booklet. I have a copy of it here with me. And it shows that there are twenty-two parks in Richfield. Or there were, at least when this is printed. Because it's my understanding. There's a map that's in there. I don't know if any of you still have this booklet. It was published in 2010. But two parks down here seem to have disappeared because I didn't see them when I drove by there today. And that's kind of an indication of what is happening in... Well, in any event... Twenty-two parks were in the book. I have known people who were greatly inconvenienced with the Best Buy project that took forty-eight homes and twenty-three businesses, as I recall. And delays that left them with two house payments to make, some of them. They were told to let their houses deteriorate. So they qualified for eminent domain. The project was not totally done, legally done, and may still be costing the city money. People were forced out of their homes on Richfield Parkway. But then nothing was built.
Mr. Hall, excuse me, if you could make your final comments. Your three minutes are coming up.
Well, there is... Okay. Council members and staff became... Jeannie has proposed a solution that is fair to her and clearly the best financial solution for the city. The park property on Eleventh Avenue was zoned residential. A current resident said it only is used for the night out. And a heavily wooded area separates the land that she is suggesting from the park. So it will not affect the park. It was originally residential. Giving a plot to Jeannie would cost the city virtually nothing. And she would be paying property taxes to the city. The Menards employee told me that the cost of materials would be sixty-two thousand. And construction, he estimated to be about two hundred thousand, which is far less than the city has agreed to reimburse her for.
Mr. Hall, your time is up. Please finish up your comments.
One more sentence. I urge you to cooperate with Jeannie and resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. Thank you for coming to speak. We have no more people here for the open forum. So I will ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the interior republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the Special Concurrent City Council and Planning Work Session of June 25th, 2019, and the regular city council meeting of June 25th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is hats off to hometown hits. I will start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to talk about the sidewalk poetry. We had a great celebration. And it was fun listening to all of the different poets read their poems. And if you go on the Richfield City webpage to the Arts Commission page, there's a section called Sidewalk Poetry. And it pulls up an interactive map that shows you where each of those poems are in the sidewalk. And they had, I think, about half of them put in place at the time of the gathering. And I think they're still working on it. So hopefully shortly they'll have everything in place if they're not already. But you can again find it at the Richfield Arts Commission page. Second of all, we were fortunate to have the groundbreaking for the Metro Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit Project here in Richfield. And Mayor Regan Gonzalez helped welcome everybody to that event. And we're looking forward to that because it's gonna, I think, help Richfield and help all of our residents that live along that line. And then finally, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at Night to Unite, which is coming up on August 6th with the Neighborhood Block Parties from 6 to 9. And I think others probably have things to say about that as well. But we're looking forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two comments this evening. The first is about the Urban Wildland Half Marathon and 5K. And just wanted to invite everybody. And I just looked on the website. And I thought the opportunity to register had closed. It's actually open. It's open until Friday at noon. And so we're... There was some question about whether we would even be able to have it because of some of the flooding and the weather. The race is on. We had to redirect. And thank you to our staff for making it so. And the extra burden to make sure we have this. It's a great event. It's a great... If you're not a runner, it's a great event just to be a part of. There's just a great energy. It's a lot of fun. It's our city showcasing itself to the surrounding communities. People travel from around the region. So that's coming up this Saturday. Join us for the Wild Refuge Half Marathon. And then August 17th is the Experience Adventures Joint Program with our Parks and Rec Program and the Three Rivers Park District over in Taft Park. And so it's a great event. It's a free event. They bring in a climbing wall. They bring in all kinds of games. They bring in a zip line that's like two and a half, three stories. So kids can zip down. And they have fishing, free fishing for the kids. And they have fishing poles there at the lake at Taft Park. So it's a great event. It's a great way to spend an afternoon. It's free. It's open to the community. It's on August 17th.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
I just want to thank someone. On the Fourth of July, you know, we have a parade. And generally, the council is given an opportunity to ride in the parade. And we ask one, you know, Bloomington, Richfield... No, it's Richfield, Bloomington Honda. And they provide a vehicle for us. And the last, for the last couple of times, they provided a really nice 350 Ford pickup. And Councilmember and I, Mary Supple, rode in the parade. And then we had two good-looking guys running behind the parade and distributing candy. And that was Justice Troutman and Simon Troutman. And so, and that was really nice. The point I want to make is that we really appreciate that Tim Carter donates the use of a vehicle for us. Because, you know, the Fourth of July happens because a lot of people donate their time. And they donate many, many different things to make that parade, you know, possible. And it was a nice parade. It was a nice day. And I just want to acknowledge Richfield Bloomington Honda.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to lift up the Fourth of July and the Second and Third of July festivities. I know we're a few weeks out now, but haven't had a council meeting since then. A huge thank you to all of the, especially the volunteers, but also the staff and all the different organizations that participate, sponsor, help plan, all of the different pieces that go into that. Again, an amazing, amazing year, amazing three days of events. Other people already mentioned the Urban Wildland Race and Night to Unite. The other thing I wanted to lift up is a friend of mine, Dave Snyder, who's been doing some work through the Community Housing Team to... I know I was finally able to join. I know Councilmember Supple was able to join in doing some door knocking at apartments and just talking to residents, talking with them about some of the housing work that the housing team has been working on. But also, like, asking people if they're interested in the Drop Off Organics Program, if they need other resources, if they're, like, kind of what their dreams are for their community. And really just making a very valiant effort that has landed a lot on his shoulders to try and engage more renters in Richfield. And so I wanted to lift up his work there.
Thank you. Everything was, almost was said that I had. I guess there are two additions. Today, I was able to attend the 494 Business Update Meeting. So there was, I don't know, maybe sixty people or more from surrounding, the surrounding business community at Best Buy today to get an update on what is happening with 494 construction, how it's going to impact our community, making sure that everyone understands what the timeline is, or giving their input, their feedback, and that as we go through construction, which will be pretty painful for everybody, we are in communication. And we're also looking at how, giving our input in the process. But, and keeping, I guess, our eye on the prize, which is improvements that are much needed. And for example, one of the things that I confirmed with Min staff is that the thirty-five 494 interchange is stated as the worst bottleneck in the country by the Federal Transportation Administration. So there's a huge need there. But it was great to see so many engaged businesses at the meeting learning more about what is to come with the 494 changes. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you so much to all the amazing work that staff has been doing. They always do amazing work. But I feel like right now, there's so many things happening that are added pressures on top of just the day-to-day of running the city. There's multiple positions that are open. So that means staff spending additional time on interviews and hiring people to fill those positions. Carrie has been so gracious to fill in for Jared. So you're doing your position and the work of another person. And I know that that's probably very stressful. And you've been doing a great job. So thank you for stepping up and doing that. We really appreciate it. And know that it's been tough. And the city's currently going through our planning, city planning, planning of our budget for 2020. So in addition to everything that the city staff always has to do to keep the city going, there's all of these other things that are happening. And I just want to thank and acknowledge all of our staff for always doing such a great job. But especially now when there's all those added pressures. And that is it. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item will go to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items are, and recommended actions have also been approved. No further action on these items is necessary. Item A, consideration of a resolution authorizing negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the Seventy-seventh Underpass Project and approval of distribution of the notice of decision documenting this decision. Item B, consideration of the approval of accepting the quotation of two-hundred-twenty-five thousand to replace play equipment at Jefferson, Nicollet, and Taft Park from Northland Recreation and authorize the Recreation Services Director to execute the quotation. Item C, consideration of the approval of the continuation of an agreement with the City of Bloomington for the provision of food, pools, and lodging inspection services for Richfield for 2020. Item D, consideration of the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of the Assumption located at 305 Seventy-seventh Street East for their annual festival taking place August 17th and 18th, 2019. Item E, consideration of the approval of a two-year use and indemnification agreement between the City of Richfield and Tom Price for the use of a four-thousand-six-hundred-ninety square foot strip of land along the edge of Lincoln Field. Item F, consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of three temporary construction easements and three permanent right-of-way easements at 6999 Lyndale Avenue South, 6645 Lyndale Avenue South, and 6749 Lyndale Avenue South as related to the Lyndale Avenue Reconstruction Project. And finally, item G, consideration of the termination of the marketing license agreement between the City of Richfield and Utility Services Partners Private Label Doing Business as Service Line Warranties of America. I submit the previous items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the consent calendar? Oh, Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for anyone listening in, since these were new acronyms for me. It doesn't sound great to be declining an environmental impact statement. But that's only because there have already been two other studies on this that deemed it unnecessary. So just wanted people to know that we are not saying we don't care about the environment, that we've done our due diligence and deemed that a further study is not necessary in this case.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make note of the termination of the marketing licensing agreement between the City of Richfield and the utility service, the partner, the private part, the... I'm sorry, I'm tongue-tied. But the insurance company for the sewage insurance. And there was a resident who brought that to our attention, that they had had some terrible or just less than favorable interactions with this company. It really is a good service. It's a twenty-year-old company that, for whatever reason, is not able to provide those services. So I just want to thank staff for being on top of that. It means so much to our residents. And for us, when they have a problem and they say, "We've been on top of that. It's already on our agenda. We're already proactively taking care of that." But as a public service to our residents, as if they, if they do have that relationship, that contract is still in force, that the contract isn't voided. We're just no longer standing behind that reputation, or that relationship. They won't use the city's branding. And I, again, appreciate the staff being cognizant of that, that we don't have any control over those services. So pulling our brand away from that organization is really important. But just also, in addition to that, for our residents, if you're listening, tell your neighbors you should check with your private insurance company, your homeowner's insurance policy. Talk to your agent to see if you can add a rider to your policy to cover the protection of the sewer, the sewer pipelines that go from your home to the street. So residents and citizens are responsible for that portion. And if you don't have a policy, you have to pay out of pocket for that. And some policies cover it, some policies don't. But hats off to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been passed. The next item is a public hearing item. And we'll go to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing in consideration of the revocation of Empire Tobacco LLC Business License for violation of Richfield City Code and Minnesota State Statute 144.414. The City of, the Richfield Police Department attempted to perform a tobacco compliance check on June 13th of this year at Empire Tobacco 6414 Nicollet Avenue to investigate a report of smoking inside the city-licensed retail tobacco establishment. While inside the retail sales area, officers observed haze and smoke. When officers asked if they could enter the other areas to investigate the source of the smoke, they were denied further entry. As a result of the licensee's refusal to allow entry to the premises, the city served an administrative search warrant on Empire Tobacco on June 14th, 2019. Law enforcement officers and chief building officials entered the establishment, observed several violations resulting in immediate closure of the business. Based on the seriousness of this code violation, city staff is recommending that the council revoke the establishment's business license. The licensee has a right to a public hearing before any action is taken pursuant to city code. The city gave written notice to the licensee informing it of the impending license revocation, the nature of the violations and basis for the proposed action, the right to the public hearing, and the time and place of the hearing. And before we discuss this, I just want to turn it over to the staff so they can add more detail.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This was a retail tobacco license application that came to the city in early March. We were under the impression that it would be a retail tobacco store. That proved to not be accurate after we received an anonymous tip regarding the use of tobacco in a rear space behind the retail tobacco shop. When that information came to us, we, as the staff report states, conducted a tobacco compliance check, which we do one to two times a year. And were denied entry. And so with what the officers observed, they eventually got in the next day and found several violations, not only of the tobacco code, but of building violations as well, which combined was the reason that the establishment was immediately shut down.
I'd like to ask our fire chief, Wayne, would you kind of put your ten cents worth in here? Because this is a real serious issue.
Madam Mayor, Council, when we made entry to the shop, the original plan submitted to the city stated that the rear two-thirds, three-quarters of the building, the tenant occupancy was going to be storage. It was obvious that it wasn't storage. There were multiple couches, hookah pipes throughout the area. We noticed electrical wiring that permits hadn't been applied for. I'm not sure when the acoustical ceiling tile was removed or the ceiling in the basement was removed. But that would render the sprinkler system ineffective. My concern is that had there been a fire in that occupancy while it was occupied with the exit doors going, the one exit door going the wrong way, we most likely would have resulted in fatalities, if not from the fire, but then from the toxic smoke.
Okay. I don't know if our chief inspector here would like to make any comments. Rick, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. Lieutenant Flaherty, do you have anything to add? Okay. So I will, this is a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on this issue, please come to the microphone, write your name and address, and speak directly into the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come and speak on this matter. First of all, I really want to thank the city council members. I know you guys do, you know, a really difficult job. You lead your own lives. And you have to really commit yourselves to this community and the City of Richfield. to really commit yourselves to this community and the City of Richfield. So I really want to thank you personally for the time that you do commit to our community, and also the city staff for being present in this situation that we're trying to resolve. So just to introduce myself, my name is Lanza, this is my sister, Lula. She is, you know, just a couple years older than me, and we're very close, we do everything together. We own and operate an adult daycare facility in Minneapolis, Minnesota called Open Arms Adult Day Center. My family has a really big heart, we really did try to give back to our community by opening this business, and we are first generations to this country. My sister and I came here, our family came here with nothing, we came here with a dream to be entrepreneurs and business owners. Now, I know that is not the concern of this night, so we wanted to open another business. I am a singer and a musician, so I have a lot of followers, I've got like over 80,000 Instagram followers, YouTubers, I've got probably like 150,000 subscribers. There's just, I have a really big impact in my community of people that I deal with, and I noticed that there was really a need for a private club, a place for us to congregate, that we could, you know, feel like we belong to something and culturally express ourselves and fully associate. So I always wanted to open a private club, and I wanted to have my own association. But in addition to that, we also wanted to open a tobacco store. And that was when I contacted the City of Richfield after finding this building and spoke to city staff licenser, Jessica Mitchell, and we spoke about the tobacco store, and I also notified her of my wanting to open this private club. From the beginning, this private club that I listed initially as storage, which I do understand the concern with the city listing this space as storage, I wasn't sure which part of the building I was going to establish this private club, because it's such a large space, it's over 5,000 square feet, there's a basement that's also there. So initially, when I did apply for my tobacco license, which was my first priority when I first had the idea to open a business in Richfield, I did list it as storage because it was being used as storage. And then several months later, once I had the funds and the opportunity to go ahead and open this private club, I did go ahead and contact the city staff and spoke with the licenser and let her know, "I am planning on officially getting this private club open and established, is there anything that I need to get as far as a license or permit in order to establish this and this private club?" And so when I spoke with her, and I have recording of several conversations, just because after going back and forth several times, after we already opened this private club and things were running already, I kept getting kind of back and forth after we already were told that it was okay. I did record a conversation with this member, the staff member, and I, you know, just because I wanted to just, I don't know, I just, she told me to do it, I just was like, I needed to be, you know. But the bottom line is, this was never a secret, I was not trying to mislead the city, I really wasn't, from the bottom of my heart, I tried to seek guidance. When I spoke with the city licenser from the beginning, I have phone records, I've got over 32 calls for the last three, four months with the city, and the majority of them were with the licenser and then the building inspectors and even the police department. So my whole point here tonight is, I definitely understand the concerns of the city, and I know that there, you know, have been some violations, but to the best of my knowledge, I personally, I would never, I have too much to lose, I have, I put food on the table for my family, my sister and I are the oldest of six siblings. I'm a very responsible woman, I run another business, I would never jeopardize that or try to intentionally mislead or try to, you know, convince, do something that is in violation because I would not want to be, it's unfortunate that I have to even meet all of you on the circumstance and the situation, but I just wanted to come here to clearly say that it was a really big mistake, and I just took the information that I was given, and I truly in my heart believed that I was in compliance, because after I spoke with the city, like I said, licenser, when I was ready to establish my private club, I asked her, "Do I need a license or permit?", and I was told, "No." And the only thing that she did tell me that I needed to do was, she said, "Since you're operating a private entity and you have this retail store," she said, "You just need to make sure that you have them running at separate hours, you need to make sure that tobacco store is closed if you're going to operate this other entity during, you know, after hours of your tobacco store." And so I just really wanted to say, you know, I'm sorry and I apologize for even, you know, denying the entry, but as far as denial of the entry, like I said, it was all based off of the knowledge that I had, and I truly did believe that I was in compliance, and that was the only reason why I, you know, wasn't, I didn't, then of the day, I wanted to practice my rights, you know, I don't know much about my rights, and I really don't know what I can and can't do when it comes to certain things with the law, but I just wanted to practice my rights because I told the city and explained to the city that I had this private club, and it wasn't a secret. And the thing is, to be honest, I know my time is probably running up, but even the first night of my private club operating and opening, I reached out to the Richfield Police Department, and I had, you know, notified them, "I have a private club, we're having a special holiday for our culture, and we are going to have probably a lot more members present than usual, so you might see a lot of vehicles in the parking lot, feel free to come by if you guys would like and just kind of just make your presence known." I was, this is, I was never trying to make it a secret or trying to, you know, violate my tobacco license, and I just want to say that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I, I'm Lula Lanza's sister, her older sister. This private club was never a secret. I have, we have phone records to prove that, that it was never, if anything, if it was a secret, we totally told on ourselves, because I was the one that told my sister, I was like, "Hey, if, you know, this is, we eat, we're Muslim, so, you know, as far as like the hookah smoking and all that, that's a part of our culture, our mom's smoke, our, and almost any like home that you go to that's either Somali or Ethiopian, East African, they have one hookah in the house somewhere." And my sister and I both, we don't drink because of religious practices and because of the cultural practices. So after Eid, we fasted for almost one month, and, you know, once you don't eat and you can't, the one thing you're looking forward to is getting with your friends, and, you know, just like how other communities like to congregate around liquor, alcohol, and drink and smoke and have a good time. My mother has her own little club that she has with like 30 women, and they get together like once every month, and they help each other with birthday stuff and all these things. And so we kind of have our own thing, and Lanza had her own thing, basically Eid, we're like, I told her to call like two days before our Eid celebration, and I was with her when she was making that call, and there's phone records to indicate that. We called the City of Richfield Police Office Station, and I remember her telling the police station, she said, "We're having an event, it's a pretty big event because our holiday, just like Christmas, is our Eid, nobody really drinks, but we all sit around and we smoke hookah, we hang out, we play games, we play la duh, there's other culture-specific things that happen." And I remember her calling and saying, you know, "We're off 6414, we gave them exactly where the address was." And then we said, "We have a private club," and then she's like, "Oh, that's like, so what's there?" And we said, "There's a tobacco store in the front," and I said, "But we have a back portion that is open space, and we're having an event there tonight, and it's a private club." And I said, "You know, the City of Richfield," and I remember her saying, "The City of Richfield is not that big, if you guys can just patrol a little more and have your presence in that area patrol just a little more, because we might get like a pretty..." We had a lot of people sign up to be a part of our membership, our private members, which we also went through and vetted through to make sure that these were people who are either singers, dancers, poetry, anybody who just wanted to be a part of that celebration, who wasn't a part of a gang, or, because that's what our main concern was, we didn't want to just have it open to anybody or whoever.
Excuse me, if you guys could please wrap up your comments.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
No problem, thank you.
So, so the thing is, I, I'm sorry, I'll just really quick finish up. I know the violations here as far as the tobacco store is concerned, most of these violations are in concern of my private club, and they have to do with my private club. They are not really specific to the tobacco store. Now, I understand certain issues, as far as like the building is concerned with the fire sprinkler systems, we did have a building inspector come in, and he approved on our building for the retail space, and there was never drop ceilings, so we never were...
You know, excuse me, but the instant issue before the city council tonight
Yes.
is the revocation of the license for the violations that are stated in the staff report.
Yes.
It is not, you know, and that is the only thing before us. So speak only to the issue of revocation
I'm sorry.
and not what, not what you plan later
Yes.
or what you're, you know, just that one issue.
Thank you, Council. I just, so the thing is, what I really want to make clear is that the tobacco store is being, the revocation is based off of the private club, because of this private club, I was in violation of the tobacco license. And because I was told that I could operate this private club and in certain, you know, I did not try to violate my tobacco license, I was just doing what I personally felt in my heart was, I could do, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We're finished with, well, I think you've shared, clarified that, so if you could please finish up.
Yeah. Okay, so if anything, I just feel like my sister was misled, and not even just misled, I don't want to say she, there was a miscommunication that occurred, something happened somewhere. And we do have, so I told her to do a recording, and the recording...
It has nothing to do with the recording, all I'm trying to say, Council, today is please consider the fact that I made a mistake, and there was a situation that occurred because of certain information that I was given, I went ahead and believed that I could do certain things because of that information. So please just take that into consideration and know that in my heart, I truly did not try to violate or, you know, anything with my tobacco license in this ordinance of City Richfield.
Thank you, thank you very much. And have you both signed in, both of your names?
I wanted to ask Jennifer Anderson for her to kind of, you know, revisit the historical context of this, and also to write, to mention the violations that have occurred and why they were cited.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the application was received at the city on March 18th. On March 29th, the police department was made aware, I believe they did a drive-by of the property, and there was a private security company on site that advised our officers that a smoke shop slash hookah bar was going to be going into the space connected to Leanne Chin's within the next month, and that they'd be having armed security on site. The next day, I had our business licensing staff person call Ms. Mohammed to let her know that a hookah bar was not allowed per freedom to breathe and per city ordinances, hookah smoking, cigarette smoking, cigar, any kind of tobacco use was not to be allowed within that building. And then she did call again, Ms. Mohammed called the city again June 4th to talk about wanting extra patrol. She had told Jessica that that back space was going to be a family space to hang out and not a nightclub. So all that to say, in addition, the building is not, the building was never intended to be used, it can't be used as a club, it's not up to par for that purpose, and the tobacco retail shop, the tobacco license covers the entire property, there is no two separate businesses, the club is not licensed, and so revoking the license just completely is, covers the whole property.
City Attorney Tejan, so in terms, I think it's time to close the public hearing, or how does this work if, I mean, we're going to have staff doing some clarifications, what if?
Right, why don't we close the public hearing?
Well, no, it's not even necessary, the thing is, we're, I'm sorry, I, sorry, so, yes, we did have a conversation, me and Jessica did have a conversation, and I did notify her, I said, "I have a private media club, I'm a singer, I have my own company, I do have a small club that I have members come, and we do smoke, Jessica." We smoke in a different part of the building, it's in the back half of the building, and she stated to me, in this recording that my sister's talking about, which we don't really need to play at this moment, but we do have her saying, "If you are going to smoke, you need to make sure in this private club when you smoke, you close this tobacco store down, and it has to have only operated after the tobacco store is closed to the public." So if you're going to have this private meeting or this private setting...
Excuse me, you know, to get back to, we're not going to discuss the club or the
Yes.
or the clients to maybe ask for a license for the club
Yes.
That's something that you can do later with staff, you can work with Jennifer Anderson, and you can work with Rick, and you can work with the fire chief, the police department, and work that out with them. Right now, we're just talking about the revocation of the license, and our city attorney, do you have any comments?
Mayor and Council, I guess it's up to you when you want to close the public hearing, if there's no one else here to speak, then you can proceed.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Can I, just a point of clarification?
Can you talk on, yeah, oh yeah, okay, go ahead.
As the newest member of the council, I am not actually sure if any of the public hearings we've had so far have had commenters, would you be willing to give a quick rundown of, sorry, up until today, just a quick reminder of the process and time limits, and I guess I'm somewhat confused as I thought there was not meant to be discussion until after the public hearing had been closed.
Mayor, Councilmember Waylon, so the process, I mean, you're correct, typically the process would be, it was open the public hearing, can have staff input, and then once public testimony or comments are done, then you close the public hearing, and then council can have additional discussion and clarification with staff at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we will continue with that process. So there's been a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed, we will continue clarification with staff. Are there additional staff comments or question from council?
From any, any one of the staff people in the audience?
I guess my final statement would be that, you know, it was, city staff felt that the application for this tobacco retail space, we were misled around the real reason for it, it appeared that the tobacco retail space was a front for the club, you had to go through the tobacco retail store to get into the club, and it's not in the zoning ordinance, tobacco violations, there were unsafe building issues. I don't know.
I, just to comment on that, I'm sorry.
Excuse, no, the public hearing is closed, thank you.
So, okay, and listed on the second page of the report are the violations that include, you know, that one, two, three, there are six violations, and there are serious violations that have transpired, so I don't know if other council members want to add anything to it.
Can I?
Councilmember Supple.
I just ask some, wanting to know what the process is, if a license is revoked, is that like forever, or can they reapply sometime down the road? I know there's been discussion of different zoning things and stuff like that, but what's the process if revocation goes through?
Mayor, Councilmember Supple, so, no, revocation doesn't mean permanent, you can never get a license again, it simply means that the license is revoked, they can't operate as a retail tobacco establishment any longer. Certainly, if they want to bring the establishment into compliance, they can, they could reapply for a new license. I want to just reiterate something that Jennifer said just a few minutes ago, and that is, so the council is clear, the license, the tobacco license, covers the entire premises.
Right.
And I think that's an important point, these aren't two separate establishments, and so the activity that was going on in the back area, which was represented to be a storage area, it was, is within the licensed premises of the tobacco establishment. So I think that's just an important clarification for the council to understand.
Exactly, thank you, Mary. Councilmember Waylon? Councilmember Waylon?
I guess just one, to go back to another point that you just shared, that I know our, one of our planning staff shared is that there currently is not a designation within our code for there to even be a process to get a private club approved with... within our code for there to even be a process to get a, a private club approved within Richfield. And so I, clearly there was some like misunderstanding at some point and I guess I'm, I'm just wondering if staff has thoughts on where, what that occurred and how we can avoid that in the future.
Mayor.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland, for your question. So there have been conversations with Empire Tobacco and they are interested in operating this private club, but we do not have that as a permitted use currently. And allowing clubs is a, is a big change to our, we'd have to create a different zoning category and, and that's a big policy discussion for the council. We have scheduled it for a work session to discuss this issue on September 10th, but it is currently not a permitted use.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from other council members? I would just like to say, I appreciate you coming and sharing everything that you shared and I absolutely value and understand the importance of being to express your culture and the use of a club in our city is not permitted and you were permitted and got the license for a tobacco shop and, you know, operating that private space isn't, that was, that's not allowable. And there was multiple violations and this is a revocation because of multiple violations of, of the city. So that is not to say that, you know, those are two separate things and I appreciate you sharing that story and what is in, in front of us is the revocation for those violations. Other comments from the council?
Madam Mayor, I just, I just wanted to thank the staff because, you know, they, they really are professional at what they do. They know what they're doing and I appreciate that, that, you know, they take every, every issue seriously. And this involves the health and safety of our community. And, and so I just, just want to appreciate you guys.
And we are more than happy to speak to you after the city council meeting. We have a couple of items, but right now there's no more time for discussion. So why don't we move to the next? Is there a motion to approve the revocation of?
I move that we approve the revocation of the, of the business license of Empire Tobacco located at 6414 Niklet and that furthermore approve of resolution with findings supporting the revocation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional or last comments from council?
I, I think I would just say, we, I had an opportunity to, to speak to the business owner in my ward and I appreciate you reaching out. And, you know, regardless of the miscommunication, I think, I think that it's pretty clear that, that the distinction between the storage space and the premise that, that our, our legal counsel, Mary, Mary Tejan points out, that that's all, that's all one space. And so I don't think there's any disagreement that in the licensed space, there was tobacco being consumed, that was not in compliance. My heart always hurts. I represent small business owners. Anytime a small business owner puts themselves out there, just tries to make a go of things and then, you know, runs into roadblocks, you know, there's, we kind of talk, you know, I don't think, this is probably the last time you do something like this without legal counsel. And, you know, moving forward, just understanding on the front end what those, what those, you know, roadblocks are. So I, regardless of how, how we vote, we wish you the, the best of luck.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Wayland.
One final comment, less about the, the content of the discussion, more about the process. I guess I would, I think, like I, the tension in the room is pretty palpable and I think that that has only increased and the trust is lost between residents and staff and council when we don't, when we don't have clear process upfront. And so I guess I would just encourage, encourage us in future public hearings to stick more to the, the process and maybe even do a, a quick reminder before each one of how that process works.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. I will take that into account.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if I can, you know, one of the things that, that the council sometimes in their efforts to mitigate or to help or to assist, we enter into a discussion about how we can do things. It's not our role to fix things here on the council desk. It's the role of the, of the city staff and the city manager to perform the duties and that includes the process. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
And the revocation has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report.
Nothing to report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. The last item is claims and payroll and that will go to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. The claims, I move claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll has been approved and seeing we have no further business, this meeting is adjourned.